Do you believe allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Gerald Buss.
Present.
Mike Rorillo.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Mike Schilling.
Here.
Crystal Attis.
Present.
David Westland.
Oh, he's silent.
If you can read lips.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, item number four, we have quorum established. Item number four is public comment. Okay, first off would be Laura Gibson. Ask you to state your name and address for the record, and if we could try to keep the comments to three minutes would be helpful.
Good evening, councilmen and Madam Clerk Treasurer. I'd like to speak a moment on the unjust controversy surrounding the Unmask the Kids Christmas tree. As a team member of the St. John Clerk Treasurer's office, I would like to give you a little insight on who our Clerk Treasurer Beth Hernandez is. Beth goes above and beyond to please town residents no matter the issue. Beth is responsible, responsive, and available to all residents at all times. Beth loves the town of St. John and shows it in abundance, and Beth takes much pride in all town events, to include Christmas in the park. It's a shame that our town, one of our town's most special events has a shadow over it because someone was offended by, because some were offended by something our constitution upholds. Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines freedom of speech as "the right to express one's opinions freely." Freedom of speech includes the right to use certain offensive words and phrases to convey political messages. As we know, some find the Unmask the Kids to be offensive, although protected by Cohen versus California in 1971. Another right is to engage in symbolic speech, as in Texas versus Johnson in 1989. Both Unmask the Kids poster and tree can be deemed symbolic, as some of the town councilmen were present at the Lake Central Unmask the Kids rally this summer. That being said, those in opposition of Unmask the Kids Christmas tree had the luxury to voice their freedom of speech by way of social media comments, emails, and calls to the Clerk's Treasurer's office, some of which were threatening in nature, but all were responded to by Beth Hernandez. Regardless of her position on the issue, Beth has been open to hear everyone's concerns and voice their opinions. The First Amendment states that in part, "Congress shall not make a law abridging freedom of speech," and I respect that our Clerk Treasurer is honoring that. In closing, Benjamin Franklin once said, "Those who give up essential liberty to purchase a temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Thank you for your time, and thank you, Beth Hernandez, for your dedication and service to the town.
Thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Kathy Bulicki.
So I will preface, Kathy works in my office. She's our accounts payable clerk. As you can imagine, we have received comments, repeated comments. Some have asked that they be shared at the town council meeting. I felt it more appropriate to not read public comment relating to me myself, and so I requested Kathy to do so on my behalf.
So she's going to do that at this time as well?
Yes, that's the only thing, I think, unless you have public comment of your own.
No, I more than spoken my mind on this, but yes.
You were just going to read public comment you received.
I am reading all the public comments that we've been received, favorable and unfavorable, and as Beth said, it's in response to the Christmas in the park, and as you can imagine, it's uncomfortable to, for Beth to read, you know, favorable or unfavorable about herself. So representing Beth, I will read them to you.
Okay.
My name is Kathy Bulicki, and my address is 10064 Alcott Avenue. So in addition to being a resident of St. John, as Beth said, I also work for our Clerk Treasurer Beth Hernandez. Email from Mary Kate McColskies. Dear Ms. Hernandez.
Does she have an address on there?
Yeah, yes, let me give you the address. 2750 Camelot Drive. This evening was our family's first time at the Tree Festival at Prairie West Park. That park is one of our kids' favorites, and seeing it in all its holiday splendor felt really special. I am so sorry about all the negativity you have been facing. Regardless of my personal feelings about that one tree, which are irrelevant, I was really impressed by the overall display in the park with so much hard work and care evident, and it was so great to see so many local businesses and organizations represented. The several in memory of trees were especially touching. Thank you for rising above the fray and striving to spread holiday cheer. Merry Christmas to you and your family and to everyone in our tri-town community. Jeff Slaven, 9153 East Spring Hill Drive. I want to congratulate Beth Hernandez and the Clerk Treasurer, staff, Public Works, Parks Department, for all the hard work and planning that went into executing this awesome Christmas event. I was so disappointed, I was disappointed to see the public reaction directed directly towards Beth Hernandez because of the Unmask the Children tree. Beth, I fully support you and your office for standing tall and taking the heat for a decorated tree that was included in the event and not suppressing any person or persons' freedom of expression or speech. I appreciate that you made the decision in not removing the tree, even in great controversy. It was amazing to see your humility in taking ownership for an event and doing it with great professionalism and leadership for the town of St. John. Rogerless, 342 Woodbridge Drive, Lowell, Indiana. He actually responded three times to Beth with an email. Hope you have better judgment next year. I hope no unmasked children die of COVID before Christmas. Very sad that the Unmask the Children tree was allowed to remain and finished in the top three. Watch the news. The resurgence of COVID will be worse than the onset. Second email. Wow, you are a supporter of Unmask the Kids. CBS has you on the late news. Third email. CBS got you lying. Sharon Mullis, 13631 Empress Lane. I would like to voice my support for the Christmas in the Park event in St. John. It's one of the few events the town has for families and has become a beautiful tradition. Beth Hernandez and her crew have done a beautiful job of bringing a wonderful event to the residents of St. John. It has always been a positive experience for all those who attend to enjoy the trees, special visitors like the Paw Patrol, Grinch, Minions, and especially Santa. The overwhelming majority of St. John residents support and love this event and the joy it brings, especially to the children. The controversial tree is just that, a tree. It's not a political statement, but rather an expression of one's family's opinion of the effectiveness of masking. Even the experts have differing opinions on this issue. I've always thought St. John was a town where everyone is entitled to their own opinion and voicing that opinion is a matter of free speech. Do we really want to become a town where free speech is squelched and the few rule the majority? Many who express their negative opinions on social media were either recent transplants or people from other states who know nothing about St. John. A simple click on a few random posters revealed two from Arizona, one Pennsylvania, one from Massachusetts, and two from New York. This speaks volumes as to which side is turning this into a political issue. I'm sure there were many more, but I became increasingly angry as I was checking them. Leave the tree up. Anyone who dislikes can simply vote for another tree and ignore it. That's the best way to express one's opinion. I would also like to express my disappointment in the town council and the town manager for their lack of support for this event. What a great opportunity they missed to get to know some of the families in St. John. The silence from the town council and town manager on this matter is deafening. You're supposed to be a team, and you're certainly not acting like one. You ran as a team, and now that one of your team members is being attacked, you're hiding in the shadows. Start supporting each other for the good of St. John and its residents. Thank you for allowing me to express my views on this matter, and please support Christmas in the park. Nicole Menasopolis, 10011 Parrish Avenue. I'd like to have the following read into the record. Once again, Clerk Hernandez and her staff have outdone themselves with Christmas in the park. With the support of our Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, and Parks Department, they have brought a festive holiday joy that brings our town together. To have such a success overshadowed by a tree is ridiculous. I stand behind her decision to let the tree stand, and I know if someone had decorated a tree stating "Mask our Children," the clerk would have allowed it to stand as well. Our clerk is second to none and a strong female role model to my daughter and countless children in our town. As our only elected female representative in St. John, we should support and stand behind her. Mary Therese Roberts, 11990 Heron Lake Road. I am deeply saddened by the recent events at Prairie West Park. I personally don't believe that the tree was appropriate. It was not the place nor the time for the rhetoric. I do believe Ms. Hernandez did the right thing by allowing the tree to stay. I truly believe she did this after much thought, because she would have been stepping on Raymond LLC, question mark, freedom of speech, and possibly occurring another legal debacle for the town. And why would one put up a tree and hide behind a fake name? It saddens me the council has not come to her defense, not one word from a vocal council. I wish more elected officials put their energy into positive activities for families in this town. I believe it's important to know who is doing and/or not doing what. It is my understanding that rules will now be put in place to prevent another atrocity from occurring. It's a shame that some thought their agenda was more, that more important, that they were willing to start controversy at a Christmas family event. I don't know why that harassment and threats are being aimed at Ms. Hernandez. Who is going to benefit from that nonsense? She has had nothing but the best interest of the residents of this town. I, for one, am very grateful for all she does, for informing us about road closures, to garbage pickup. I appreciate that, because I need to know more than when a fish fry is going to be. Thank you, Beth Hernandez, for all you do for the town and the residents of St. John. Your efforts did not go unnoticed by the majority. Sarah Miller, 6224 West 136th Avenue. I just wanted to say you are a true American. You deserve a lot of credit for standing up for freedom of speech with the Unmask the Kids tree. I do not know what your stance is, but respecting everyone's individual's rights is what this country is about. I have no doubt you have received a lot of heat from crazies. If there's anything the conservative base can do to show support, please let me know. Stan Woof, 9102 West 103rd Place. The tree should be removed. Story is now gone nationwide. Stain on St. John. Lydia Bovat, 9291 West 103rd Place. I would like to say that I thoroughly enjoyed the Christmas in the park. I am so grateful for the commitment and the leadership of our town clerk, Beth Hernandez, and her staff. The clerk office and the park department did a tremendous job. My family and grandchildren loved all the trees, the fireworks, and especially Santa. Good job. Rita P O P P, I'm not sure if that's Pop or Pope, 1902 Logan Berry Lane. I am totally against the children being forced to wear a mask. My biggest concern is that this situation has taken freedom of choice out of the hands of the American people. Wearing a mask has not proven to stop COVID and feels more like a dictatorship. The government has no business in our schools. My prayers go out daily for all the people struggling to keep their jobs and their freedom. This situation is blowing way out of proportion and is causing unrest to the parents of these children. Thank you for your time. Amanda Beatty, B-A-T-T-E-Y, 8407 Heron Lake Road. We have lived in St. John since 2013. I'm from Lowell, Indiana, born and raised here. I want to tell you thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you do for this town. The town is blessed to have you. The real locals know this. I have no idea where you stand on masks, but thank you for letting all voices be heard in a respectful manner. I do agree, I'm not quite sure the park is the best place, but when parents can't get school boards to listen, they go anywhere they can get their voices heard. The amount of hate you received is heartbreaking, that anyone would let themselves be so fueled with anger they attack. You don't deserve that. So many were not even from this area. The hate people have in their hearts, I say, is the real pandemic. God bless you both this holiday season. Keep doing what you are doing. We are truly thankful to have you. Ignore the hate. These people are not happy individuals. That's all I can say. Donald Piper, 9248 West 103rd Street. I wanted to reach out in support of the way you handled the tree debacle. You stood your ground despite personal views. That shows great leadership, and you are doing an awesome job for the town of St. John. Thanks for all you do. His wife Julie Piper is also mentioned on here. Elizabeth Weers. I saw a post on 9128 Winding Trail. I saw a post on Facebook about emailing you to show our support of the Unmask the Kids tree. My husband and I support it and appreciate the town not removing it under pressure. Brad and Beth Urem, 12461 Pennsylvania Place. I am a Crown Point resident and would like to add my name and address to go along with the email Sarah Miller sent you in regards to how you handled the controversial Christmas tree. Thank you for protecting our First Amendment. I can't imagine how it has been for you over the past few weeks, but please know that you have my families and my deepest gratitude. Have a very merry Christmas and a blessed New Year. And the last one is from Jeffrey Shu, 14160 West 93rd Place. I am emailing for my support of Unmask the Kids tree. We live, we live in a cancel culture society that has hurt feelings and doesn't understand free speech. We allow devil worship and atheist displays, often next to nativity sets in our society. While I don't agree with them, I don't want them banned. I believe masks are child abuse to children that cannot breathe. That tree is a demonstration to stop abusing children, and I support it. You are welcome to read this email on public record. Please take this into consideration and don't bend a knee to the woke cancel cultural mob. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mike Bovat.
Thank you, thank you, Town Council. My name's Mike Bovat. I live at 9291 West 103rd Place, St. John, Indiana, and I would like to comment on the Christmas in the park. You don't have to raise your hand, but I'm raising my hand if you were there. You talk about a phenomenal event, a spectacular event. It was tremendous. It was a success. It was phenomenal. And if you don't believe me, ask my grandchildren. What I seen at the Christmas in the park, beautiful trees, people having a great time, enjoying themselves in the town of St. John. And I want to say a special thank you to Tyler McLeed, the park superintendent, and the parks department, and Ms. Beth Hernandez, the clerk of the town of St. John, and the clerk's staff. Thank you for the effort you put forth. I mean, it was phenomenal. And I got to tell you, I'm a little taken back that there could have been a few Scrooges in the midst of that that were looking for some fault, that were trying to have some negativity, but I didn't see it. It was spectacular. It was phenomenal. And a shocker, I seen Wayne Pondinas at the event, and he was supporting and he was helping out. Who would know that town councilman would be at the, Wayne Pondinas would be there? But he was there. Gentlemen, it was phenomenal. Ms. Beth Hernandez, it was phenomenal. It was such a roaring success. And like I said, my grandchildren loved it, and to think that people would look at this and find fault and find negativity is a little shocking. But I would like to commend Ms. Beth Hernandez, our Clerk Treasurer. I'm kind of shocked that she's having some criticism thrown her way, because in the day and age that we live in, we need leaders. We really do, gentlemen. And Ms. Beth Hernandez, our Clerk Treasurer, is a leader, and I think we would all agree with that. During the COVID epidemic, I am privileged to be on the park board, we were kind of at an impasse with what we could do and things that we could have and activities, and we were so challenged. Who was one of the main leaders in getting something accomplished? Ms. Beth Hernandez, the Clerk Treasurer, and the Clerk Treasurer staff. We got the cornhole going, we got volleyball going, we had different things. Ms. Beth Hernandez is a leader, and I got to commend her. She has great resolve, integrity, and when a lot of people might waffle and be indecisive, I guess you guys all know, she's the type, she's going to get the bull by the horns. And in this day and age that we live, we need that. We need leaders, and Ms. Beth Hernandez is a leader. I thank you for that, and I thank you for supporting the citizens of St. John. Now, I don't have a dog in this fight. My kids are out of high school, they're married, I have grandchildren, but with everything I've read and what seems to be transpiring, majority of the parents are in favor of not masking their children. I work proudly for Handover School Corporation. I drive a bus. It is extremely controversial. I don't know if there is a consensus. Some are for the mask, some are against it, but it takes guts, it takes leadership to stand up for a majority of the parents. Ms. Beth Hernandez, our Clerk Treasurer, I thank you for that, and she seems a little shy about it, but hey, I'm going to put it out there because it's the truth. And as far as the Christmas in the park, I hope if you guys, if you could do that, Santa coming in on a helicopter. My grandson, he just, I mean, that was the biggest thing in the world. And like I said, I got pictures on my phone. If you don't believe it, I will always take the time to show you my grandkids. If anybody wants to see them, let me know. Thank you for your time, and thank you all for your effort very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Jenna Ogranaszanovic. Did I get that close?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
I also go by Jenna McGen on Facebook. That's easier to say, so. Good evening, Council and Clerk Treasurer. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I wanted to talk about the Christmas in the Park Christmas tree, and what the last speaker just said was, I agree, I took my kids out there the other night, and it was, it looked better than it looks in the pictures, you know, they were outstanding. My one complaint, I would have to say, is they saw where Santa was, and we saw Santa was booked, so we couldn't see Santa this year there. But next year, now we know that's where we're going. But the hate and the vitriol in the comments about the Unmask the Kids Christmas tree is just really out of proportion to what I think the community feels about the Christmas tree. To the people who are angry about it, you know, there's just angry people out in the world who are going to be angry about anything, you know, they're just looking to be upset. And I think that the people who thought that the tree's statement was inappropriately political, they didn't comment with the same vitriol against the St. John Democratic Precinct organization's Christmas tree, which Ms. Hernandez also allowed. So to anybody commenting against her, saying that, you know, she's partisan or, you know, behaving inappropriately by allowing political statements, she was just very fair in how she handled the event. Going forward, I would just hope that the council would think very carefully about changing policies. I understand that, you know, this is a moment where St. John is getting a lot of publicity about this. I think sometimes you just kind of have to let it pass, and, because to change any policy, you know, is a dangerous slippery slope towards just eliminating free speech and diversity of thought and opinion. People are gonna debate and talk about things and feel differently, and that's what's great about living in this country, is that we can all do that, and hopefully we can be respectful, as she said when she posted the tree, that she thought we could comment and have a discussion and a civil discourse. So I think that's about all I wanted to say. I kind of had short notice, I didn't know this meeting was happening tonight, but again, thank you, Ms. Hernandez, for supporting the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
The camera's not working. You can't, the video is not working for the gentleman on the line can see the council room. Jason, are you able to fix the, for online they could see the council room? Dave mentioned he can't see it. The video's not working?
All I can see is a, like, the JD for Jason in a green circle, so there's no, you cannot see the council chambers like you normally can.
You can't, the video's not working for the gentleman on the line can see the council room. Jason, are you able to fix the, for online they could see the council room? Dave mentioned he can't see it. The video's not working?
All I can see is a, like, the JD for Jason in a green circle.
Okay, the YouTube is working, though, because we're looking at it right now on the screen.
Any luck?
Okay.
Can you take down the Packers sign, please?
Usually it's a Red Sox flag.
That's probably why it doesn't work. We will move on.
Can I say something?
Yes.
You know, I'd like to thank all you guys for coming out here, giving your public comment on the freedom of speech, and we had some people that had negative. You know, as we sit here today, 80 years ago, men went off to fight for the freedoms of speech that we sit here and have today, and, you know, you stood up for them during the, all this recent turmoil down at the park, you know, and I don't think that we're going to make, you know, someone made mention that we're going to make limitations on what people say next year. I don't think it's going to be any limitations, you know, anybody has right to a tree, you know. That's what this country's, we pledge allegiance to the flag and freedom there, and 80 years ago, like I said today, you know, people went off to fight for people's freedom to voice, whether it was the people that wanted to mask the kids up, they had their same equal opportunity to put a tree up with a mask on it. So, and I don't think anybody up here was trying to limit anybody's speech, but used to afford.
I certainly wasn't trying to limit anybody's freedom of speech. I took a bashing over it, so.
Could I add to that? Do you mind? So.
We're not done with public comment yet, but go ahead.
Oh, I thought we were done with public comment, I'm sorry.
But I would like to add to that. I totally agree, so I, freedom of speech is a cornerstone of our country, our freedoms. It starts right there, for sure. I totally support the policies of what we had in Christmas at the park and how you handled that. And the people who are mean spirited and want to come up with all sorts of nugative, you know, everybody's wrong if they don't share their point of view, they're just, I don't agree with them. They're wrong, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So I just want to say for the record that during the controversy, quote unquote controversy, last week, I was contacted by both the Clerk Treasurer and the town manager with regard to it. At that time, I gave him my legal opinion, which is as follows, that if you're going to have a function and you're going to allow other folks to have, you know, some sort of sponsorship privilege or right to have that privilege, and if you do that, then you cannot, as a town, discriminate against a particular message unless that message is an obscenity, and even then, if it's a political message, there are still limitations. And so my opinion to both the Clerk Treasurer and your town manager last week was that because you are allowing groups to sponsor trees, you cannot eliminate or fail to allow a group because of a message. And, you know, this particular message, whether anyone agrees or disagrees is irrelevant. It is a core political speech issue, and had the town or the Clerk Treasurer taken steps to remove that tree, I believe that you would have been subject to liability for violation of the First Amendment rights of both the sponsor of the tree as well as those that support it. So that was the opinion I gave last week, and I think at the end of the day, the town did the right thing, and the clerk's office did the right thing.
So I will say going forward, I will be better about contacting. So I will say, going forward, I will be better about contacting legal before I just make a decision that is, you know, I laugh about it with Dave or Joe, my attorney, that I just sort of, not laugh about it, it's not funny, but that I kinda made a decision that freedom of speech was going to prevail, and I was not going to remove that tree. And it wasn't until, I don't know what day, I spoke to Dave, and I thought, you know, in hindsight, I probably shouldn't just respond without checking with legal first, especially in matters like this, but, you know, it just...
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
May I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, after listening to the one lady that said that we did nothing as a town council, I'd like to publicly apologize. We probably, as a group, should've said something, and we didn't, and we kinda let Beth take all the hits. She was on vacation and getting threats, and that's no way to spend a vacation. So I apologize, Beth, I should've had a couple words to say about it, but I didn't, and I apologize.
Well, and I appreciate that. I don't expect an apology from anybody. Like I said, I take full ownership of the decision that was made. You know, it's my name on the event, I sign everything, you know, I made all the decisions, and I'm certainly not looking to, I don't wanna say drag anybody else into it, but I understand that taking on roles of that nature brings responsibility for the decisions that are made as well. And, you know, I appreciate the support, you know, thank you, Mike and Mike, and for that, and Wayne for the apology, although, you know, for me personally, I understand that it was my event, and therefore I take the responsibility for it, whether it's good reviews or bad reviews, and so I don't know that an apology is necessary, but I thank you for it.
You're welcome.
Well, I'd like to say, I love Christmas in the park. I think you do a great job with it. The fireworks are actually my favorite, but I had a class reunion, 45th class reunion that I had to attend, so I wasn't able to go there, but I enjoyed it last year when I went, and the year before when I went, so thank you for your work there. We do have some more public comments, so we're gonna keep moving if we could. Chuck Pullen.
I've managed to live here for four years and not have to speak once to you, which is kind of a record for me, I'll be honest.
Address, please.
9346 East Oak Ridge Drive, which overlooks the park, and it's a beautiful location. One of the things I want to do is start with thanking all of you for serving the people, and I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your day to be here today. If you would indulge me, I'd like to address Ms. Hernandez. Mrs. Hernandez, you know, I'm very blessed to, like most of us that live here, I'm blessed to live in a very safe and clean community, one of the safest in not only the state but this country. And, like I said, I moved here four years ago. My favorite part of where I live is that every night, my bedroom overlooks your park, and that every night during the summer, I get to watch beautiful sunsets, I get to watch children play in the park, and families enjoy, and during the winter, I get to look out the window and see the beautiful Christmas in the park display. And like all of my neighbors, it didn't bother me one bit who sponsored what tree, I didn't think for a moment about anything at, you know, who sponsored it, did it affect me, did it affect, it didn't bother me one bit, I just enjoyed my view out my window and went to sleep at night. And so, all I'd ask of you is please don't lose any sleep over what the clickbait news of Chicago, somebody in Massachusetts, or a wonderful woman from Chandler, Arizona, has to say, because all of us that live here, and all of us who have a beautiful view of your park, appreciate it every day, and I thank you so much for serving the people, and I thank all of you for serving the people. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Dante Girillemann?
Dante Girillemann from 13042 Water Leaf Drive. Just wanna address the Council and just say thank you very much for what you guys do for this town, that you continue to do. I believe, Mike, your tree came in top three.
I think it was in the top three, yes.
Top three, and I think as a town, we need to celebrate that the top two were about protecting the rights of children. And against my better judgment, I'm part of the Lake Central Majority Group, we're fighting currently the School Board of Lake Central, that in my opinion is contradictory and not following the rule of law, and that's another battle by itself. But we decided to address the media, and as we talked to CBS, Jen did an interview with CBS, and we talked to her about the tree and what we had asked, if it was gonna be fair and partial, or partial, and she actually said no, she has a minute thirty that she would be very fair by the people that she interviewed. And I thought the interview that she did with Jen, I think was above my expectation. And I think as a town of St. John, all of you should unify and be very proud of the way that Jen carried herself, and for the integrity that Beth held through this entire thing. I don't know you, Beth, this is the first time that I meet you, I'm Dante, very nice to meet you. Mike, I know why you guys came in top three, the integrity of your business, your dad, you, and what you guys do, and that just is exemplary of who you guys are. Kudos to you. The other two is about protecting children. And I'm really thankful that it wasn't a mask that won, but to let you guys know for the fact that Unmask Our Children came in second, top ten, or 10,000 people voted, and that because it was a national organization, you know, Congenital Heart Foundation came in number one, both of those organizations are about the betterment of children. And I think regardless, it seems like there's a little bit of attention here, especially with the negative press that has been coming over St. John, but in my experience, no press is bad press. And I think that in what you were seeing and what we're doing here is that St. John should not cower, should not bow, or should not do anything different except what you guys have continued to do, and that's making this community a community of excellence. So Beth, do me a favor, take a deep breath, really relax. These guys all owe you either a beverage or a winter celebration of saying, "Thank you for holding your integrity in this process." And I just wanna say from the bottom of my heart, I am very conservative financially. I'm a commodity broker, I work down at the Board of Trade. I am socially moderate. If you're a good citizen in standing, you pay your taxes, and what you do behind closed doors is totally your freedom of choice. I'm not gonna be dictated by a mob or by a minority that wants me to tell me that I can and cannot do something. I'm not anti-mask, I'm not pro-mask. But what I wanna see from this community is to protect the rule of law, as Mike highlighted about the Bill of Rights, and I wanna have a town council that gets behind the least of these that is pro-Constitution, pro-freedom of speech, and as long as I know that you guys can do that, I do not need to be politically active. What the Board of, the Lake Central School Board has done, they've made me politically active. I will be removing three, or Board members from Lake Central, because now they've made it my fight. And what I respect about this group, and what I want Ms. Hernandez to know, is that I expect you guys, as my town councilmen, to be unified, putting on a front of saying no to the rest of the people that are not inside this town, and to realize that the majority of the people that are here want you guys to do what's right by as citizens, want you to do what's right by protecting the individual rights of our people, our children, and to do that in unity. Whether we agree or disagree, the best thing that I love about our Constitution is that we can walk out of here shouting and have a disagreement, but to know that I'm not gonna be arrested in the middle of the night for having a differing opinion from either one of you guys. So Beth, I'm gonna ask everybody that's here that wants to support, would you stand up, please? I'm asking you to do that?
Okay.
And can we all give her a round of applause for what she's done?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. Okay, that is all I have. So we will move on to item number five, new business. Five A is to select a consultant to provide engineering services for the Klein Avenue Extension Project. Mr. Philatus.
As you may recall, you previously selected a, or chose a selection committee to score, or scoring committee to choose, score the RFPs that we received to do the Klein Avenue Bridge Pro, or Klein Avenue Extension Project. We have since scored them, we also, we use the Endot Consultant Rating Sheet, as you will see in your packet here. So that is the matrix we used. The past performance was provided by Endot, so used, so they scored that portion, we scored the bottom portion lower than that. The consultant that came in with the highest score, as you can see in your packet, was American Structure Point. So our suggestion is that American Structure Point be selected as our consultant for this project. They do have a team of other consultants that are under them as well, because there is a distressed and, distressed business enterprise DBE goal that is set by Endot of seventy percent, or seven percent, which you can see on the top sheet of your packet. So in order to meet that goal, they had to bring on other team members, but again, our suggestion would be that American Structure Point be selected for this project.
Questions, comments?
You guys were instrumental in the 45th through NERC, right, the widening project there? Yeah. That's a project that they did here locally.
Actually, if the representatives for Structure Point would like to come forward in case there are questions.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Council members. Eric Wolverton with American Structure Point. So if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
I guess my question is based on the point rankings and things like this. Chris, you're comfortable with what Structure Point is bringing to the program? I know we asked them to actually kind of work on one of the initial projects to help get the bidding for this through NERC. And we selected them for that, and then to select them for this, again, I would just wanna make sure that we reviewed the process as well, and making sure that the town council, if there's any questions or comments, that they get a chance to do so.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that decision.
Okay.
They babysat, they did babysit the NERC approval.
Okay.
And for that, we should be thankful.
Okay. Mike, you have anything?
I don't.
Anything else? Wayne, you have any questions, comments?
I like the company, but I don't like the project. I don't think, I voiced my opinion on it before, I'm not for the project. I like the company, I think they're a good company.
Okay.
And I'm okay with them doing other NERC projects, but not on this one.
Okay. So you're not in favor of the Klein Avenue Extension?
No.
Okay. All right, so just, yeah, the Klein Avenue Extension is a bid that we went through with NERC that we were awarded. The fact that it was through NERC means that eighty percent of the funding comes from the federal, twenty percent is our responsibility. It was also on the NERC's list of roads that needed to be improved in northwest Indiana. So I think the fact that we're able to do this at twenty percent of the funding, because if it had to be all on us, it probably never would get done, so.
Yeah, there's a big expense there, and I don't know, my, I come up with a figure like twelve million to do the project, so twenty percent of that, I think, would be 2.4 million. And I think that that money should be spent on other roads that we're not improving, but again, that's my opinion, and I respect all you guys for your opinions. I think the 2.4 million might be better spent on other things, but again, my opinion.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we are probably five years out on this project?
As it pertains to beginning engineering, this, the consultant selection is the first step.
Right.
As most of you, I think, are aware, NERC is fiscally constrained every year. Year to year, they have to be able to spend their money. That fiscal, that fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, usually about the middle of May is when that fiscal year closes. Because NERC is fiscally constrained, bids will come in, some projects will come in under budget, over budget, they're always looking for a home for some federal funds, they don't wanna have to send that back to Endot. So what this does is it puts you in a position, coming this, this spring, when NERC has some of those dollars available, to be there and ask for those, to begin your project with engineering.
Okay.
As we stand today, the project does have federal funds allocated for engineering and right-of-way, however, that's not until fiscal year 2025. So really wanna be in a position where we can leverage NERC for those funds sooner. I will say that with the passing of the Infrastructure Investment Act, we have heard from NERC that they expect an additional $5 million to come in, starting the next fiscal year, over what their current coffers are, so there's gonna be a lot of money that's gonna be available there, and as Council President Swet's mentioned, this is 80/20. I mean, so we're in a good position where a lot of times these projects, NERC is only in a position to fund construction and then construction inspection. They've already committed to assist the town in spending eighty percent on both engineering and right-of-way, so construction, probably, yeah, you're looking at probably a three- or four-year period before you were gonna see shovels in the ground, but, you know, this is the first step so that you can leverage NERC for some engineering dollars, and take that first step so that you can move towards an actual construction project.
Brian, we can use road impact fee money for this project as well?
Basically, right now. What do you say, Eric?
I don't see, why not, yeah. Those are local funds, so any local fund can match federal funds.
I didn't wanna speak out of turn, I wanted to make sure I had a professional opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's one of the uses of impact, you know, road impact fee money, because you can't use it on existing problem areas.
Or maintenance and upkeep.
Okay.
Just for clarification for the Council, the, and this is just what was put in as part of the application to NERC, the expected construction cost, or the expected amount cost of the project is $8,437,500.
That's today's money?
When they put in the application, 2020? That's 2020's money?
A year ago, yeah.
So we're up a little bit.
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to engage...
Hit your microphone.
I'd like to make a motion to engage Structure Point to do the initial engineering services for the Klein Avenue Extension Project.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I'll send for virtual, a motion by Brian, second by Mike Corilio. A roll call, please.
Mike Corilio?
Yes.
Brian Blazak?
Yes.
Wayne Pundinas?
No.
Mike Schilling?
Yes.
And Gerald Swett?
Yes. Okay, that is adopted. Four to one.
Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Happy New Year, happy holiday.
Same to you all.
Thank you. All right, item number B, Consider Ordinance 1747, which is an ordinance adopting the 2022 salary ordinance. So before you is a couple of different scenarios. So what we've done in here, well, I'm sorry, didn't mean to take your thunder, Mr. Town Manager, you can go.
By all means, I work at the pleasure of the Council. By all means, I work at the pleasure of the Council. As you started to allude to, there are three budget scenarios here. They are the same, that's why you only have the first two pages are the only thing that's different. So there is a three percent salary increase for employees, and a $3,000 increase for firefighters, so the not, the actual responders to the firefighter fires. And the three changes in the three different scenarios are for elected official pay, of which you'll see, again, the three will have, one will have no increase, one has a three percent increase, and one has a flat $350 increase. So again, I, we provided the top two pages, so that way you can pass either of the scenarios tonight, and we just toss out the other two scenarios, the top two pages.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yeah.
I move to go with the three percent.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Schilling for three percent across the board. Your support for that?
I'll second.
Wayne supports that. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
I think that that's a, that was a good move by Councilman Schilling, and I also like to say that the cost of living, I think... also like to, to say that the cost of living, I think, went up, uh, eight percent, nine percent. So I propose that all other employees get a six percent raise. That makes every department that we have, whether it's Public Works, Fire, Police, all equal, because I think it, if we slight one or slight the others, there's going to be a morale problem. And I think that, uh, with everything that was said about our town tonight, I think that's a, that would be a great idea. So, um, that's my proposal, that we, uh, we do that. Um, but I'd also like to defer it, because I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at in, in that, uh, salary ordinance.
You want to defer? Is that what you're saying, Wayne?
Yeah, I think we, uh, we need to look at that a little bit better.
There's already a motion on the board, and you supported it, so what, we can talk, we can talk this through if you want. What, what do you want to look at?
Well, I, I think we, we need to go back and look at it. Um, and, and you're right, I did, I did say yes. I apologize for that.
So there are, I just want to be, and I don't think that we'll want to go through them line by line, but there are, and then maybe Dave can jump in here. I think Wayne probably was in agreement with the three percent across the board. Um, but there are some defects in the ordinance. I went through this today, and there are, I don't want to go through them line by line. I think that should be something we would discuss elsewhere.
So the, so the defects are in math?
There are some defects in math.
Okay, so if we approve a three percent increase as opposed to the numbers that are in here, would that work?
Yeah, I mean, because there are some, it just, well, there's some defects in the math, not too many defects in the math, but there's some defects in the percentages.
Okay.
Uh, distributions, I should say, not percentages, but the way that they're being distributed. Uh, for example, in my department, utility, or my utility billing clerks, I'm not going to go through each thing, because we'll be here another forty-five minutes, but the utility billing clerks should not be being paid out of the general fund, because their sole purpose is to manage
Utilities, right.
Okay, so that needs to be changed.
So they're all really, um, corrections to the text or the numbers?
Well, like the IT director, uh, for, not, I'm sorry, Cliff, Cliff's position.
Right.
He got moved from the Police Department to a whole different classification.
Okay.
But his employment letter is that he serves at the direct supervision of the Chief of Police.
Chief of Police, right.
So now you have that position being, you've cut essentially the Police Department's staff, moved them to, under Jason.
Right.
But they're still paying for them.
Okay. So the reason we had this meeting was so we could get the salary ordinance going, so...
I get it.
So if we could, um, my suggestion would be to...
We can pass it on first reading.
Pass it on first reading, and we'll bring it back at our December twenty-second meeting
Right.
For final, and hopefully we can get all these typos and corrections done for that meeting.
For the what meeting?
Twenty-second.
The sec, twenty-second.
Jesse, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Is that enough time to enter all that?
Well, once we get it figured out, he can at least get started on that. I mean, it's just, hopefully just going to be finalized on the twenty-second, so, once we take care of the errors
Okay.
Then we should be good.
Okay.
That make sense to you, Wayne?
Yeah, but I, I'd like to make one comment. I still like the, the rest of the, like, Police, I'd like to give them, uh, some money, and I'd like to give Public Works the clerical, because we're, we're all links in a chain. And I've heard comment that, you know, Fire's getting this, and I understand that. I think the Fire Department does a good job. All our departments do good, and I, I think that a six percent raise is doable. Because we, we're shorthanded.
Wayne, do you know, not to interrupt with you, Wayne, do you know what our overall increase in levy is for the town of St. John?
That I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that.
You know what it is? So, do, are you going to link, uh, increase in cost to increase in revenue?
Well, I, I would like to see if that's doable, if we have to talk to Baker Tilly, uh, see if that's doable.
Well, I don't know. I, I don't see a, uh, the reason to go above three percent. We also are bringing back longevity for all the employees, that's a...
Exactly.
Well, how, how longevity going to work? I, I know, I've heard about longevity. How is that going to work?
That's going to be paid for out of the CARES Act money.
You want to explain how it works, Mike?
Well, I mean, so much per year.
Each year that, each year that an employee has been here, they get a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and it maxes out at
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred dollars, just like the program was years ago.
And that will be effective in January, so we'll either pass at the end of the December or our first January meeting, one of the two. But that would be, at first, I was afraid that we were, in order to bring in the longevity program, we weren't going to be able to, in fact, do the three percent raise, but since we're able to use some of the CARES Act money there, uh, we are able to do the three percent raise and bring the longevity program back. So I thought that was a bonus for the employees, for all the employees. As far as more money for Police and more money for Public Works and things like that, um, we can look at some of that stuff with some of the other, uh, federal money, but the reason we made the big adjustment to Fire is because the Fire salaries are so much lower than our Police salaries are, and we wanted to try to get those even a little bit closer.
Plus, we're not competitive.
Uh, yeah, we need to be competitive, but we also, you know, there's, there's, there's just a big difference there, and we wanted to try to make, try to shore that difference up a little bit.
Can I ask for clarity on this?
Sure.
Going back to the Fire Department? So when I do the math, based on the salary ordinance, and I don't want to get into each particular, they're not getting three thousand. They're, some are getting six thousand, seven thousand, you know, some are getting a little bit over three thousand, some are getting thirty-seven hundred. Where is that coming from?
They should all get three thousand plus three percent.
Yeah, that's, okay.
That's the way it was supposed to be set up.
So we're going to have to really look at that, because I think one thing that we're not, maybe, that's not being considered, is that, like the Fire Department has mentioned, they have their regular hours, and then they have their overtime hours.
Their overtime hours.
And when you're increasing a percentage or increasing their hourly rate, you also have to factor in the mandatory overtime rate.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's throwing some of it out of whack.
I don't understand, so...
Yeah, but if...
I don't understand the, the, why that would cause a problem whatsoever. So, so if we're doing, well, Beth?
No, I'm listening.
So if there's, if we're giving a three-thousand-dollar raise, and you're talking about a percentage based on pay, whether you have overtime or not, or whatever it is, it's three percent.
You didn't give a three-thousand-dollar raise, that's what I'm telling you.
What's the, the part you didn't, you said the confusion was a three percent?
So you gave, you switched them from twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents an hour to twenty-four dollars and three cents an hour. Okay, so their overtime rate then goes from thirty-two eighty-two an hour to thirty-six oh-five an hour.
Is that three percent on both?
I didn't do the percentage, but you guys said that they were going to receive a three-thousand-dollar raise, correct?
And the base pay.
And the base pay.
And the base pay. It's not a three-thousand-dollar raise, and you want to do their base pay on two-thousand-eight-hundred and eight hours? Is that what we're doing the base pay on? Are we doing it on base pay plus mandatory overtime?
If they have to work overtime, that's federal law.
So I think that's number one. You guys need to decide what are you considering base pay? But if you're going to consider it on two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight hours, Mike, you know what I'm talking about, right? Right alone, you're at four-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars on base pay.
I don't know how else you do it except for on base pay.
Huh?
But they, they have overtime.
Then that's not factoring in overtime, I'm saying. That's on base pay.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the...
That's on flat, regular base pay hours.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it's on base pay.
But when you pay, when you pay overtime, you have to pay overtime at time and a half.
So I'm saying above the four-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, you're also, they're also seeing an increase on their mandatory overtime pay.
Okay.
So if you're saying, going back to this flat fee idea, idea...
So let's make sure we clarify that.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it's on base pay, because if somebody works, you know, they work sixty hours on average versus somebody else, obviously, that's going to be a much bigger, that's going to be a much bigger difference. That's why I'm assuming it's on base pay.
That's what it, I agree with you, it should be on base pay, but if we're...
Not sure how else you, you can do it, so...
But when you increase their hourly, then their overtime hourly increases as well.
Going back to base pay.
But everybody's hourly overtime increases.
So you guys are fine then with your average firefighter not getting three thousand, but forty-two hundred? That's what I'm asking. That's what you guys are asking.
It's twelve-hundred of it, they're going to earn an overtime.
I, I don't want to get lost in those numbers you're shooting at me, but
Okay, well...
Base pay, and then, then obviously, it would be three percent on top of that, and that would include overtime, three percent on top of that. But it sounds like there is not clarity, so I would suggest we push this off as well. I think we need to be on the same page.
And I do agree with Wayne, not that you guys have to factor in my consideration, but yes, maybe, I will agree, the firefighters may need a boost, right? Because you want them to be competitive. But some of our clerical office staff also aren't competitive with their pay. I mean, you know, we've, we've got people making fourteen dollars an hour, seventeen dollars an hour, again, going to Target, McDonald's, things of that nature. We've got high schoolers making that. So I would like maybe some consideration for some of our other employees who, you know, if, if we're going to look at being competitive.
Okay.
Okay.
So, what's your pleasure? Your motion?
We can pass it on first reading, and then you're going to have to adjust it.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make another comment.
Okay.
I, I'd like to see Public Works employees, that some of them want to make money, and they're, they're getting sent home, you know, for, for comp time and stuff. And I'd like to see that we would ask the, the department head there, the, okay, guys, if you want to stay, or you got your overtime, you got your choice, it's not mandatory, you go home to keep the budget down, because they can't get any overtime, uh, uh, if they get sent home. And I would like it, hey, the guys that want to work and they get the overtime, it's only fair for them to get overtime if they want it. But I think a lot of them would probably just say, I want the comp time. But there's a couple that would like the overtime. If we could do that for them, that would be great. And I looked into salary ordinance, I think summer help, uh, was at nine fifty-three an hour. You can't even, you can't even, well, work at McDonald's for nine fifty-three an hour, that, that starts at fifteen. So while between now and the next time we have a meeting, maybe we should look at that. If there's a mistake there, or it's, mistake is on my part, I, by reading it, I'd like to see that boosted up, because our summer help is critical during the summer, so if we could do that, that would be great.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Motion was by Mike, second was by Wayne.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I was going along with the proposal. I'm not, I'm not for the salary ordinance yet. I'm kind of like with Mike. Let's look at this, let's hold off, and let's look at it, and, and see what the problems there might be.
Well, you can do that at the next second reading. First reading just gets it on the table. We can still make modifications to it and to finalize it for the second reading, which would be the twenty-second of December.
But today, today it needs a unanimous vote, uh, to go any further.
No, it does not. It doesn't need unanimous. It just needs to be, um, it just needs to be a majority.
Is he asking if it's unanimous? He, is he saying he doesn't want it to be unanimous?
If it's unanimous, we can adopt it tonight.
It's going to be deferred. Tonight's going to be deferred, that's what they...
Also, we're, we're going to vote on deferring it, okay?
It will be passed on first, sorry.
It will be passed on first reading tonight. That does not need unanimous consent, and then it will come back for second reading on the twenty-second, where that could be finally adopted as the salary ordinance for next year.
But he's asking, can it go on first reading unanimous, but not be adopted on second reading tonight?
Yes.
If first reading's unanimous.
Yes.
If the first reading is unanimous, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Mr. Pres, isn't it?
Yes.
Um, it's been a while since Mike Schilling made his motion, and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure the exact, the exact verbiage of that motion anymore. Um, so if I could ask Wayne to withdraw his second and Mike to withdraw his motion, and then someone to make, if, if it's the pleasure of the council, which is what I'm hearing, to, a motion to hear this on first reading, but to set a second reading for December twenty-second, I think it would be a cleaner record of what you guys are trying to do.
So you'd like that as, as part of the motion, to put the date in place?
I would.
Okay. So Wayne, would you remove your second?
Yes.
Mike, remove your motion?
I'll remove my motion and start with a new motion.
Okay.
Perfect.
You may.
I will make a motion to pass on first reading, the salary ordinance with the three percent raise across the board.
And set second reading?
And set second reading on December the twenty-second.
Okay, is there support for that? You all right with that, Wayne?
Yeah.
Would you...
I, I, I heard what he said. I just had trouble with, uh, people, but yes, I am.
Okay, will you support that, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, quick question on that.
Yes.
Just, just in case there's trouble on December twenty-second.
Mm-hmm.
Some, would that cause a problem, since that date is cemented in there? What, what happens if we come, what happens if there's a snowstorm? We got to do it on the twenty-third?
On fourth, well, I don't know about that.
Twenty-first. Should we, should we say around the twenty-second, or?
Mr. Wesley?
Going to date, and everybody, does that cause a problem?
If there's a snowstorm, you're still under the governor's, um, executive order that allows you to meet virtually, so nobody has to show up in the building. Um, we could all meet virtually over Zoom if needed.
Can we?
That's true. Um, Chris is right, you could also just say, your next public meeting.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, instead of the, okay, I'll amend my motion.
Just in case, you never know.
Instead of December twenty-second, our next public meeting.
Perfect.
You okay with that, Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay. Then before we get confused, all in favor, oh, roll call, please.
Mike Corilio?
Yes.
Brian Blazak?
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos?
Yes.
Mike Schilling?
Yes.
Gerald Swett?
Yes. Okay, so that is considered on the first reading. Okay. Then we move on. Consider Ordinance Seventeen Forty-eight, which is an ordinance creating a Department of Stormwater Management. of Stormwater Management. Chris.
This would be a, an ordinance to adopt, um, or create the board for the stormwater management, uh, that will oversee RMS four. Um, it will create a three-member board. Um, they will have four-year terms ultimately, but the first, um, the initial constituted board, if this is adopted, would serve staggered terms of two years, three years, four years. Um, and they will basically, um, outline the budget of what will become the stormwater, uh, utility or the MS four program for the town and oversee that. Um, the state is coming out with a new permit for MS four stormwater. Um, when staff was at the annual MS four conference, uh, just a month, I think it was in October, um, we received draft ordinances. Uh, so there will be additional MS four stormwater ordinances to come, uh, given that the new permit's coming out. Um, that will repeal the town's old stormwater MS four ordinances and ideally adopt the new ones that the state had Purdue University create for them. Um, so also if this board is constituted, I believe that it would be a good starting point for them to review the draft ordinances that Purdue has created for, uh, the state and us, um, and then make a suggestion for adoption to the town council.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Is there any money involved in paying somebody to run that department? Or is it just three people like the sanitary board or the water board?
This would create a board similar to the sanitary board. Uh, it, it, similar to the sanitary or the sanitary water board. Um, it would also, um, the political parties will have to be observed so that way no one political party has, um, all three chairs basically. Um, yeah.
So then there, there's, there's no employees. There's nobody on, on, on the, uh, uh, on a payroll. Then who would, uh, and this is similar to Mariville, right?
This ordinance is likely similar to Mariville's, um, since, you are correct, since there are no current employees that handle MS four. I believe it's the desire of the town, uh, town council to fill the public improvements inspector position. That job description has that employee handling MS four responsibilities for the town. Um, so when that position is filled, um, they will kind of become the liaison to this board, uh, as, as staff, um, who will then, you know, help the board navigate MS four. And then to also create reports similar that the public works department does for the storm, or for the sanitary and water boards, um, the public improvements inspector will create monthly reports to the stormwater board.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So what we are looking for would be a motion, consider ordinance seventeen forty-eight on first reading. Do I have that motion?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number seventeen forty-eight on first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mike Corilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Uh, Mike Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swett.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. So is there a motion then to adopt ordinance seventeen forty-eight?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, for the support. Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mike Corilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Mike Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swett.
Yes. That is approved five to zero.
Council president, if I can interrupt, uh, since this was adopted, um, if the, if it's the desire of the town council to establish this board for January, uh, can I suggest adding this to the, um, the last item on the agenda, which is to announce open boards and commission seats.
Please.
To advertise for the three new positions that will, three new board spots that will be opening up.
Yep, that would be good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, item D is to consider approving the twenty-twenty-two meeting schedule. Um, it is before you. Questions or comments on that?
Can we hold off on it? Does everybody, has everybody looked at it and are there gonna be any changes?
Well, the town council side of it looks okay to me. I mean, we moved Thanksgiving to Tuesday and the December meeting is on Thursday, December twenty-ninth, so it doesn't interfere with Christmas.
Okay, I, well, I know last year we, we, I don't know, we didn't get it right away, but they, they looked at it and then made some changes. Um, and I, I don't know, I'm out of town, so I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at it. But, um, if everybody thinks it's okay.
Yeah, and you know what? If we need to, if we need to move a board around a little bit, it can always be modified. But, you know, I think everything is in line in, in accordance with what we've done in the past.
All right.
So do I have a motion to, uh, approve the twenty-twenty-two meeting schedule?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, for your support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mike Corilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandinos.
Yes.
Mike Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swett.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Um, item E is to announce open board and commission seats. Mr. Salatas.
So as you know, the town annually has to make, uh, appointments to boards and commission seats that are open. Uh, we have three seats opening up on the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those will be four-year appointments. Uh, political affiliation is not required. Uh, we have on the building corporation, uh, three seats, one-year appointments, political affiliation is required. The contractors board is, uh, three seats, two-year appointments, no politi, no political affiliation is required. The economic development committee will have seven seats opening up, one-year appointments, no political affiliation required. We will have one seat opening up on the park board, which is a four-year appointment, um, and their political affiliation is required. Uh, we're looking for a Democrat or an independent. Uh, the plan commission will have two seats opening up. Those are four-year appointments. Political affiliation is required. We have three, uh, employee positions opening up on the plan commission, one-year appointments, political affiliation not required. The redevelopment authority will have three seats opening up. Those are three-year appointments, political affiliation is required. Uh, the sanitary district will have one seat opening up, four-year appointment, political affiliation is required. The safety board will have two seats opening up with three-year appointments and political affiliation is required. The waterworks board will have three seats opening up, one-year appointments, political affiliation is required. The shared ethics committee will have one citizen appointment opening up, will open. Uh, that is a one-year appointment, no political affiliation is required. And the newly adopted stormwater management board will have three seats opening up. The terms are one, two-year, one-three-year, one-four-year, political affiliation is required. Um, since the plan commission will be meeting before, um, meeting on the January twelfth, as adopted, um, in our meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-two, uh, it is suggested that we, uh, take applications until December seventeenth, so that way we can make the appointments, um, at our next council meeting, either on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. So that way they can be, uh, appointed to fill that, um, the board for their next meeting. And then all their board applications be submitted by, by January fifth and those can be made at the January twelfth town council meeting. And then just for reference, applications can be found on the town website.
Okay.
Okay.
So, is it possible on the town website to put, for example, on park board, you need one spot and you need either a Democrat or an independent? Could you kind of do the same thing with the other ones that require, um, political affiliations? Let them know what we need if it's?
I believe we can get that up on the website.
So I mean, like, for example, the plan commission has two appointments open. Is it one Democrat and one Republican? Do we need two of whatever? If you could kind of spell that out, that would be, that would be helpful?
We certainly can.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the appointments?
By the way.
It's a lot of people.
The political affiliation is what you drew the last election.
The last primary.
Correct.
That's correct.
So therefore, if you switched for some reason, you'll be harnessed with that going forward for this period.
Correct. Okay.
Or you can get certified by your party.
Well, there lies the group.
Right, you would need to be certified by the chairman of the county.
Yep.
Right. Okay, item number six, reports and correspondence, town council. Mr. Schilling.
Um, just one thing, as, as we remember, uh, for Harbor today, uh, we did have a councilman that served down here many years ago, Jim Teal, uh, is now passed, but just remember him and his service he did for St. John and his, uh, United States community.
Okay.
He served in a gunner in World War Two.
Okay. In a plane or on a boat?
A boat or a plane.
Okay.
That's eighty years today, Michael. Yep. That's a long time.
Anything else?
That's it.
Wayne, anything?
Uh, Founder's Park is at a standstill until spring. There's a little bit of work going on, but not much. Um, the skate park, uh, they haven't installed the electrical conduit that I know of. Uh, so that's kind of at a standstill. Skater system, they'll start installing it in March. Uh, they're still monitoring the system and making some tweaks to it, but, uh, he sent, uh, sent me an email along with Chris. So that's going along pretty good. Um, other than that, uh, nope. I think, uh, we had a, had a lot of good comments from the people today about our town and should be proud of that. Uh, we got a, a strong town. No matter all the criticism that we got from across the country, uh, we still stand strong and that's, that's great. So I, I thank everybody for coming to the meeting, their comments. Uh, it's great. Everybody have a, a happy new year, good Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
You as well, Wayne.
Yeah, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Mike?
Uh, for our economic development committee, uh, we are continuing to work on our waterfront district and our overlay district as well. Uh, we have a trip tomorrow, uh, with, um, our town council president, our town manager, our building department, developer, uh, also our economic development, uh, chairman. We are making a trip to Carmel tomorrow. Uh, I want to, uh, say a special thanks to Mayor Mesteski, uh, who's going to host us. Uh, we're gonna meet with their city engineer. We're meeting with councilmen, their local developers, uh, and we're gonna gleam some knowledge in how to, how they did what they did, what they liked, what they didn't like, um, build some rapport with them, uh, who have done a nice job developing their town for we can, uh, develop ours in a good and in a, in a, a nice manner like they've done it. So with it, our trip there is tomorrow. So we're looking forward to that. That's it.
Brian?
We're, uh, we're passing expectations. The road impact committee had impact, um, or figured, we had forecast, um, three hundred homes a year. We now have issued somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and seventeen. And also, we've issued a hundred and seventy permits under the new road impact fee. The fund has, it's put four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in the fund. And that's what Eric had mentioned earlier about is there going to be some money available from the road impact fee? That's what this can be. Not all of it, but we're limited by the law as to what we can do.
Right.
But right now, the fund has about four hundred and nineteen grand in it.
Okay. Again, I would like to echo two of the comments that were brought tonight. Thank you all for being here this evening. Uh, it's a cold evening and it's the last thing you probably wanted to do is have to come out, but, um, I do appreciate anybody who came forward and, and made public comments. Um, Beth?
Um, just a couple announcements. One, uh, we are proud to announce at our Paw Patrol event this past Saturday, uh, we were able to raise four hundred and fifty-three dollars for our PD K9s match in radar. So that's a success for us. I want to make sure to thank everyone who contributed. It really is a great cause. Um, this Saturday, we have our Grinch night. New this year, we are adding on Jingle Johns, which is like a singing porter potty thing. So that kind of, I don't know, it's something different. Um, our vendors for this eve, uh, that evening will be Pascal's at Midwest. So all of you who remember our good old Pascal's, they're gonna be there serving pizza and then cute as a cupcake. So be there early because they keep selling out. Um, we will be, um, providing free train rides, hot chocolate, popcorn as usual. I know one of the ladies that was here today mentioned when she was at the park, all the Santa spots were filled. But please keep in mind that Santa, um, is available with no reservation required this upcoming Saturday and then December eighteenth. Um, there may be a line, but, you know, he'll stay as long as it takes to see everybody. And, um, that should be it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Chris?
The only additional updates I have is that the, um, Community Crossroads Grants, um, the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty have been closed out. You have been sent the closeout letters from Indot. Um, and now that we have selected a consultant for, uh, the Klein Avenue project, um, there is one more, um, one more piece of paperwork that I need from Indot. And then I will add that to the packet that was in your packet and send that down for, for the review.
Okay.
We're moving along.
Right.
All right.
Good job, Chris.
Mr. Westlin, anything?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, I'm sorry.